Just to let everybody know, we're gonna be getting started. Okay, we're ready to start. Welcome to the Barnstable School Committee meeting for June 7th, 2023. I will start off with the 1.1 district vision and core values. District vision: The Barnstable Public Schools educates the whole child by creating a student-centered school culture that addresses students' physical, social, emotional, and academic needs by creating a safe and healthy learning environment in which students are challenged, supported, and engaged. Core values: In Barnstable Public Schools, we value commitment, collaboration, and community. Commitment: We are dedicated to the continuous learning and growth for all. Collaboration: We work together while keeping students' needs at the center of all decision-making. Community: We build strong, respectful partnerships that support student success. Moving on to 1.2, Statement by the Chair. Video and audio recording of meeting. I remind everyone that this meeting is being recorded and will be broadcast on Channel 18. I also remind any member of the public who wishes to make an audio or video recording of this open session of this meeting to first notify me as the chair, and I will inform the public of the recording as required by the open meeting law. Seeing nobody, we will now move on to Highlights in Education. 2.1, Recognition of Students in the Advanced Studies and Leadership Program. Future problem solvers in mock trials seniors? You're...okay. Sorry. So, see, I told you. I said five to 10 minutes, and I did it in two minutes, so we're ahead of schedule. So, Carrie, come on down and welcome.
Thank you. So, my name is Carrie Morris. I am the Director of Teaching and Learning Pre-K to 5, and I oversee the Gateway Department. And this time of year is always very exciting because we get to recognize students and their achievements in Barnstable. We will be recognizing three different groups. We will be recognizing students for future problem solving, mock trial. We will also be recognizing some adults in mock trial. And then we will be recognizing some students for the Advanced Studies and Leadership Program that will be held in Mass Maritime. So, first, I'd like to...although the students are not here tonight, they are actually on a bus as we speak, traveling out to Western Mass, to UMass Amherst. We have a group of students that are competing on behalf of Barnstable and representing Massachusetts in the international competition for future problem solving. Future problem solving is a unique opportunity in a program that we have in Barnstable that encourages critical and creative thinking, as well as teamwork. It starts in 4th grade, and it goes through 12th grade. The students that are competing tonight are Ryan Christensen, Sophia Atzlis, Cole Raposo, Nick Ramos, Sloan Contrino, Callie De Deco, Alisa Brew, Lena Nickerson, Matthew Broncaccio, Kathleen Ramos, Mila Valentine, Josie Jordan, Ryan Charlotte, Giovanni White, Peter Andred, and Beckett Rogers. So, please join me in wishing them and their coaches, Deb Contrino and Christie Sally, safe travels and good luck at the competition this weekend. I'd like to introduce one of the coaches for mock trial, Bruce Colwell. He's going to be here to talk a little bit about mock trial and honor some students.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you. I appreciate being here. I thought maybe I'd just begin with a couple of comments about sort of what mock trial is and why it's such a meaningful thing at Barnstable High School. It is first and foremost, actually, a team. It's a competitive team. Students get the experience of competing as they would if they were on an athletic team, and they take the competition very seriously. It's a great growth experience in terms of the competition. It is...the competition is based in a case, which is always created annually by the Massachusetts Bar Association. The Massachusetts Bar Association does a wonderful job every year. It's really an incredible thing that the organization does for kids throughout the It creates a fictitious, yet extremely realistic court case with characters, witnesses, and circumstances that are, as I say, very, very realistic, but of course fictitious. They don't make it very clear in the circumstances as to how the trial should end. We play it out. The kids play it out, I should say, not me. The overarching challenge that I think is really something is that the kids are given a packet each year at the beginning of the year, and the packet is filled with all of the rules, et cetera, all of the...sort of the lessons about how legal cases are carried out in courtrooms. And it's filled with affidavits, sworn statements by these fictitious characters. And the real challenge for kids, and it is an incredible challenge, I wish I had done it when I was in high school, the kids are challenged to do real higher-order thinking. They're challenged to read the affidavits with a fine-tooth comb, pick out every detail that they can, so they really have to analyze what a witness brings to a case. And they do this sort of individually. They read on their own, but then they come together, and they have people like Mr. Rapp, who volunteers, who has volunteered, I can't even think of how many hours, help them process, help them tease out all of things, everything that's relevant, and eventually try to synthesize an argument, a cohesive argument, that they try to put together as a team. It is a wonderful experience for kids to be challenged to think at a very, very high level. Some of the other things that are really wonderful is, we then actually do, as I say, compete. We go into a courtroom. We've gone to...and before COVID, we always went into the Barnstable County Courthouse, sometimes to the Superior Court, and the kids would get the experience of being in a real courtroom. And we play out our role, whether we're the defense, or the plaintiff, or the prosecutor. We are given a side by the Mass Bar, and the kids compete. And it's just...it's a wonderful experience. They go in with courtroom attire. They understand all of the expectations in terms of behavior, et cetera, and they, I think, develop a great respect for the legal process. Anyway, I won't keep talking about this. I just...I'd like to... Eighth graders? Are there eighth graders here?
Yes.
Seventh and eighth graders here? I hope you're listening. This is...
Can I just ask you...can I just ask you a question? Because I honestly had never...my fourth child's a senior, and I've never heard of this, so like...so, I...like, just for everybody behind you...
Yeah.
Like, how do you get involved in this? Like, is it a club? Is it a...like, how is this? Sorry, Carrie, if you were gonna answer this, my bad.
No, I'm not excited.
No, like, how...like, I'm just curious for kids that are interested in law, and like, I've never heard of this. So, until Peter and Carrie were having a conversation, I was like, what's that? So, just really quickly, like, is it a club, or how do you get involved in this?
It's an after-school activity. It does fall under the umbrella of the Gateway Program. We do advertise, and we draw kids, a lot of kids word-of-mouth, but we do struggle sometimes to find kids. One of the beautiful things about the Barnstable Public Schools is how much is offered.
Yeah.
So, we struggle to...
Good and bad.
Get all the kids that we'd like to get, but we do get some wonderful, high-quality kids to come in and participate. And one of the things I was gonna say that's also beautiful about it is, it's so challenging. All of the kids, at some point, really kind of get knocked down. It's hard. They have to go up. They have to...they have to sort of do some public speaking. They have to think on their feet, and they're competing against other kids who want to knock them down. And our highest-level kids will get knocked down. They'll...
That's okay.
Yeah, it's okay. It is.
Perseverance.
It's...they get the resiliency.
Yep, and resilience.
So, it's a wonderful experience in every respect.
And Mike, there...there's a judge in the room, or an attorney, or someone who is the judge.
Yeah, the officiate, right.
And as Bruce said, it's a competition. They're graded, and there's a winner, just like a baseball game, or a hockey game, or anything, and there's a loser.
That's just so cool.
And depending on how they did in presenting their case, one team wins and one team loses, and then they move on to the next match.
How many competitions do they do?
Well, it's like a playoff. Is it still three?
It's...yeah.
Three throughout the year?
It's set up as a tournament.
Oh, okay.
As a tournament. Minimum three, maximum, I don't know, 11, 12.
How many tournaments are there in a year?
So, there's one statewide tournament.
Okay.
And depending upon how many different schools throughout the state enter...
Depends how many...
They set you up sort of in brackets, just like the World Cup. So, you want to survive your bracket and then move on.
Okay.
So, in your bracket, you begin with...you begin with three competitions.
Okay.
Right.
Cool. Well, thank you very mu...that's just so cool. Go ahead. Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. I was just...so neat.
Yeah, well, so, I did come here in part to be able to talk about the program, which I'm glad I got a chance to do, but I also came here to honor two of the students in particular this year, who were sort of unofficial captains of the team. One of them, I think that Ms. Morris mentioned, is Ryan Christensen. He's off competing in another competition. He's a competitive young man. Ryan really took the lead for the team this year in particular. He just sort of just stepped into that role. It's just who he is. Last year was his first year as a junior, working with the team, and he picked everything up very quickly, and he noticed that there was gonna be a vacuum, and he just sort of stepped right in, and he took the role of really organizing kids and encouraging kids, et cetera. And he did a phenomenal job doing that. I remember last year, he really impressed me so much, when I didn't really know who he was, and we still had masks on, and we got together for the first time, and I did not know who he was. And I saw him with a younger student, an underclassman, who probably didn't feel very comfortable. Ryan didn't know the team any better than anybody else, but he made a point of just spending time talking with that young person. It's just the kind of person who Ryan is. So, he was a...he is a natural leader, and I wanted to be able to thank him for that. Lucy Comar also is...I'm gonna miss Lucy. She brought an energy to the team that was just...you can't duplicate it. She has a quiet confidence about herself. She's confident, but she's not...she's not brash, and she brought that, and she presented so well to the rest of the kids. The younger kids, when we went into the competition, they would sort of look to Lucy, and Lucy was just, you know, she put them at ease, like, we're gonna do this, you know, sort of Tom Brady style. So, I wanted to be able to thank Lucy as well. So, those are the two people I wanted to speak with, about, excuse me.
Yes, thank you.
Are you gonna...okay.
So, as you could tell, I was getting very excited sitting down, and it's for all of you that I was getting very excited. Every year, we talk about, how do we get the word out about mock trial? How do we share information? And I think we're gonna do this every year, just like we did it tonight.
Perfect timing, I'll tell ya.
So, for those of you that are going to be going into the high school, or in the high school, and moving to the next grade, please consider, because it is a phenomenal program. So, tonight, there are three individuals that, over the course of COVID, kind of moved on, but they were instrumental in working with mock trial. One was Stuart Rapp. He is an attorney that would come every week and impart his knowledge and guide the students and support them. And another was our very own Peter Good. He retired, and then you got him. But he retired.
Thanks.
And this was all during that time where, you know, it's just, all of a sudden, our world changed. And then this past year, we had Andrew Vince take on a new role in the district and pass the baton on to another individual who is coaching alongside of Mr. Colwell. So, I wanted to honor them, even though it's been maybe a couple of years now. I wanted to honor them publicly. So, if you could, I'd like you to come up. You're gonna smile for a picture. And the plaques that we're providing them state, "Making a Difference Award Presented to Stuart W. Rapp in recognition of your outstanding dedication to Barnstable High School Mock Trial. Thank you for your time and efforts. You made a difference."
Thank you very much.
I wanna take a picture.
Okay. May I just say one word?
Yeah.
Or a couple of words? To the school committee. Just to bounce off Bruce's statement, it's a team-building event. It truly is a team-building event, and it also, the critical thinking aspect you brought up, it's incredible. These kids are thrust into a very complex set of facts.
Adult, adult.
Absolutely.
Right.
And I've seen people act in mock trial more adult than adults that I deal with in court.
Right.
So, it's very impressive. It's made me a better person just doing that. There's no question, those kids have just been phenomenal, so.
Excellent.
Thank you for allowing me to do that.
And the plaques read the same with different names, so come on up. So, Andrew, and Peter, and we just want a picture.
Sure.
Very good. No, that's all right. Bruce, yeah. Thank you.
Good, good. Yeah. Hey, thanks for all you did. All those of you.
Thanks, you did great.
Alrighty, so, last and not least. Tonight, everyone that's behind us, pretty much, is here to celebrate and honor students for the Advanced Studies and Leadership Program. Each year, Barnstable Gateway works in partnership with Cape Cod Collaborative and Mass Maritime Academy to select highest-achieving students to participate in a 10-day learning experience, emphasizing project-oriented instruction, team-building, and leadership development. Barnstable represents the largest group of students from the Cape and Islands invited to attend ASLP, and this year, we have 40 students attending. So, I'd like to call out the students' names, and if you would please come up, big smiles. We'd like to honor you and celebrate you. Tara Brun, Eleanor Bullock, Eliza Bunshu, Abigail Cerilli, Lila Devine, Samuel Dunn...
Come on down. Start over in that corner. Nope, come right over.
Elena Gonzalez.
Right in front of Jen.
Grayson Hickey.
There you go.
Jonah Hughes, Charles King, Maximo Kuhn, Owen Leighton, Hunter Malcolm, Ashley Marino, Brayden Marshall, Lila Matherin, Elise Pananam, Jacob Pilarella, Brandon Ramos, Leah Reese, Addison Sears, Avery Story, Katie Wong, Olivia Belich, Retasi Sharon, Anthony Centronparella, Caroline Cogswell, Maita Drutra, Isabella Enos, Teja Garcia, Kiara Hughes, Alexander McGrath... You can start going in front, too. Clara Nunes, Jacob Rosell, Luca Santos, Brian Shepherd, Angelina Spagnuolo, Christiana Taylor, and Haley Parker Varavan. So, families, you can get up and come on up to take photos.
Don't need to be shy.
Big smiles.
Wait, hold on.
I remember most of you when you were in kindergarten, and to see you now and see where you have come, and how far you have come, and just to be excited for what you're going to bring to ASLP, and then bring back to Barnstable and beyond, is incredible. So, congratulations. Thank you so much.
That's amazing, 40 kids. Anybody have any comments?
Yeah, Mike, just for me, again, congratulations to the students in the intermediate school. But Carrie, one thing, you know, you mentioned that mock trial, you were looking to boost the enrollment. I'm not gonna make this long. I know people, you want to get out of here, but my commendations to you, but I just see such an opportunity with mock trial, particularly at that intermediate school age. I teach 7th grade. That's when our learners begin to become opinionated. They begin to grow that independent streak. Well, this group, this year, has been understated. Last year's group certainly had their own ideas and ways of seeing the world, but in terms of mock trial, it's an avenue to funnel that passion, those ideas, those strong opinions that you have, and to kind of understand what it takes for those to have validity in the real world, when you look at those affidavits, you know. It's, you know, Tom Brady, as was mentioned, one of his quotes is, "Well done is better than well said." And so, you have the passion, you know, you express that to us as educators. We want to...we understand that energy. Sometimes it's misdirected, you know, but we want to put it going in a direction that's gonna be fruitful, and that's gonna be helpful for your understanding. So, with that mock trial, I wasn't even aware that it was a component of Gateway. And there's somebody that participated on his college debate team, and that was tremendous. People here might see that I do enjoy speaking and think that I have the gift-for-gab, although I'm not gonna hold you much longer, you know, but it's just to grow the program, and then for the students within the program to see how they can take those ideas and what it takes for them to have value. Having an attorney, it's not just to be opinionated about something, but it's to see, how can that really be impactful? That's the true challenge for them, and to recognize that at a young age is invaluable. So, great job.
Anybody else? Peter or Kathy? Go outside.
I think, following Andre, there's no more to say, but congratulations again.
Yeah, congratulations. And at that, I will adjourn the meeting, so everybody can leave as you would like. Oh, not adjourn, I'll recess the meeting.
And water. And please, if you're taking pictures when you drop them off, picking them up, feel free to share them with us. We'd love to hear their stories when they get back. So, I guess we work with...
I sure did. I sure did. Thank you. Yeah. Sorry, it took me a while. No, no, hey, you know, it's... It took me a long time to say that for you, so. Yeah, no, it was...it was... Yeah, I...yeah, I mean, yeah, if I was...if I hadn't moved on to the new role, I would totally could be this. Yeah. Right, right, yeah. It's a lot of learning, you know, but it's good, though. But, yeah, and I would look to help with, like, getting more kids...getting more kids involved and figuring it out, and, you know, Bruce and I talk a lot. We cooperate, we hit together. Right. Yes, most definitely. Thank you, Carrie.
Okay, we're gonna bring the meeting back into...from recess. If you could please just take your conversations outside. Thank you. If you could just take your conversations outside, I appreciate it. Thank you. Okay? We're now gonna move to 2.2, and Highlights in Education, 2023 Max Courage Essay Anthology. Mike, come on down.
Thank you. Hi, welcome. Hi. How are you? Long time no see. That's right. For those of you who I haven't met, but I do think I know everyone, I'm Mike Andrews. I teach 6th grade English at BIS, and I am thrilled and proud and completely heartened to share that this year, in the Max Courage Curriculum Anthology, we had five 6th grade students published. I have extra copies here for the school committee members, but I'd like to share a little bit about the program from the press release, which is also in the book itself, to kind of show the gravity and the weight of our five students who were selected. So, from the press release, "Max Courage honored five Barnstable Intermediate School students during the last week of May for their outstanding personal essays on acts of courage selected for the publication in the 32nd edition of The Courage of Children: Boston and Beyond." For five years now, Barnstable Intermediate 6th Graders have participated in the integrated English Language Arts and Social Emotional Learning Curriculum, exploring the role of courage in texts that they read and in their own lives. As a capstone to this program, students write personal essays about a lived experience of courage and submit them for a publication in the annual anthology. This year, 6th graders Haissa Aquino-Pala, Jordan Eldridge-Bryant, Nathan Neves, Josie Swift, who is here with us tonight, as is her teacher, Ms. Bonnie Hickey, and Finley Sylvia, were among nearly 6,500 students across the globe who participated in this essay contest, and only 80 of those were selected, and five of those 80 were from Barnstable Intermediate School. So, that is incredible, right? I teach English, but I think it's like 1%. So, it is an incredible, incredible statistic. This is the fifth year that Barnstable Intermediate has participated in this program, and it started as a pilot, and then grew, and truly has become a cornerstone to the 6th grade curriculum at Barnstable. Too often, in schools today, we lose student voice, and we are often worried about test scores and standardized tests and bubble sheets, and this essay allows students to be their most authentic selves. It allows them to choose their topic. It allows them to decide, what am I willing to share with my classmates, my teacher, the world? And students do that on all varying levels. But what it creates is a culture and a community in those English classrooms in the 6th grade that brings everybody together, and it honors every single student in there for having a moment of courage, and the courage to share that with their peers. It is, for me, as an English teacher, my absolute favorite unit. I've heard from families that it is their favorite unit, that it is truly a turning point sometimes, that they write these stories, and they bring them home, and they share them with their parents, and they go, "I had no idea." But it gives students an avenue to share these stories. who participated in this essay contest, and only eighty of those were selected. And five of those eighty were from Barnstable Intermediate School. So, that is incredible, right? I teach English, but I think it's like 1%. So, it is an incredible, incredible statistic. This is the fifth year that Barnstable Intermediate has participated in this program. And it started as a pilot and then grew and truly has become a cornerstone to the sixth grade curriculum at Barnstable. Too often, in schools today, we lose student voice. And we are often worried about test scores and standardized tests and bubble sheets. And this essay allows students to be their most authentic selves. It allows them to choose their topic. It allows them to decide, what am I willing to share with my classmates, my teacher, the world? And students do that on all varying levels. But what it creates is a culture and a community in those English classrooms in the sixth grade that brings everybody together. And it honors every single student in there for having a moment of courage and the courage to share that with their peers. It is, for me, as an English teacher, my absolute favorite unit. I've heard from families that it is their favorite unit, that it is truly a turning point sometimes, that they write these stories and they bring them home and they share them with their parents and they go, "I had no idea." But it gives students an avenue to share these stories at tumultuous times of adolescence. And we have had winners for five years straight. I expect us to have winners for another fifty years straight. But the power of it is that even when a student is not published, when we announce if we have had a winner, the entire class stands up and cheers for those kids. And I think that's a real testament to the program itself. I think it's a testament to the curriculum and the teaching strategies that go along with it. And more than anything, it is a testament to the student voice that is so honest and vulnerable and raw and, most importantly, courageous. So, congratulations to our five winners this year.
Excellent. Thank you. Congratulations to the five winners. Thank you very much and thank you for everything you do. I know that you haven't been here in a while. I was kind of getting nervous. But thank you for everything that you do and all of our staff. They do a phenomenal job from, as you saw the presentations before, and it's just, it's amazing what everybody puts the extra effort in and what they get done. So, thank you very much to you and congratulations to the five winners. Anybody have anything else?
Yeah.
No, they're not here.
Yes, and we have Josie Swift over here. She's one of our five published essayists.
Come on up. Do you want to? Do you want to just come up and just take a picture? No, it's okay. You're okay. Well, congratulations. Excellent job. I'm impressed, very impressed.
Yeah, Mike, I can tell you're a motivating teacher. And if you ever want to get out of education, you have a great voice for radio. You know, terrific. Well done. I taught sixth grade for many years and that's not the easiest thing to do, get them to write.
The best grade in the world.
You know what? I liked it. The worst was eighth. But I did like it. I lasted a long time there. But well done to you and, is it Bonnie? Well done. Congratulations and to the kids as well.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah, Peter, let me just echo that, tip of the hat again. But what resonates with me, it's a couple of things and I'll make this brief. First of all, you know, being in the academy as kind of coming up through our education, you know, there's a term, publish or perish for the college professors, you know, that are in grad. So, when you go to college, a lot of your teachers are grad assistants that are working towards their PhD. And so, they have to teach classes as a part of that. And, you know, publish or perish, meaning, you know, you can be the best teacher in the world, you know, but if you don't get those publications, if you don't get those independent ideas out there, you know, your career is going to stall. So, that, for our students to understand at a young age what it means to be published, you know, and what it takes, you know, to have that idea. And you mentioned 6,500 applicants and eighty total, but five from Barnstable Intermediate School. So, these are future journalists, you know, these are future writers that we're building and we're cultivating. And the second reason, you know, this is, it speaks out to me is because I was at a wonderful event held by the PTO yesterday at Barnstable Intermediate School, looking at things that are going on online and cybersecurity and the district attorney's office, our SROs. It was just out of this world and it really had an impact. But the point is, you know, a lot of the frustrations and the anxiety, students can't express themselves. People were having a difficulty expressing ourself, you know, in this information age, you know, and the information anxiety that comes along with it because we're just flooded. So, I'm not going to, I'm not going to talk, but, so just the ability to write, to express yourself and to get that on paper, it has such, it's so impactful for us as human beings and that's at a young age, kind of what we're helping them with. To get away from the hot media for a time, to get away from it for a time and to get to some cold media, we need it, certainly. But then that's another just wonderful out shooter, you know, of what's going on here. That's outstanding.
Thank you so much.
Excellent. Thank you. Congratulations. Okay, we're moving on to 3.1, Approved Special School Committee Meeting Minutes For April 26, 2023.
Move to Approved Special School Committee Meeting Minutes Of April 26, 2023.
I'll second.
Have a motion second. This is a voice vote, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. I just have it unanimously. Moving on to 3.2, Approved School Committee Meeting Minutes For May 3, 2023.
Move to Approved School Committee Meeting Minutes Of May 3, 2023.
I'll second.
Have a motion second. This is a voice vote, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I oppose nay. I just have it unanimously. Moving on to 3.3, Public Comment. So, public comment will be limited to three minutes per individual and thirty minutes total. There will be no debate or action taken on public comment items. The committee will take items under advisement or the individual will request an item be placed on a future agenda. The chair will also allow public comment at his or her discretion during the meeting. Having said that, I will now, once I find my phone, I will now open up public comment. If anybody would like to speak at public comment, if you could just say your name and what village you're from. Give me one second.
Sure. My name's...
Oh, give me just one second. I want to give you the time. Sorry, I couldn't find my phone.
I have mine.
Okay, you're all set. Whenever you're ready. Welcome.
Thank you. Chairman, Superintendent and esteemed committee members, my name is Kim Pulsford and I reside in Katoit. I'm addressing you as a concerned parent and an engaged member of this community. First, let me emphasize that I wholeheartedly support public education. As a teacher myself, I have personally experienced the challenges educators face and the tremendous dedication they bring to our profession. I believe it's my duty to be a voice for those who may not have the same privileges and opportunities that I do. Based on my first year of experience as a parent in this district, I am disappointed. My concerns lie specifically with the policies and systems in place at Enoch Cobb Early Learning Center regarding special education and their treatment of proactive parents. I came to the school with legitimate concerns about my child's development. Once a child turns three, parents have the basic right to request an evaluation. When I did, school personnel asked me to call them on the phone and told me my daughter could lose her spot at the school if we pursued the evaluation. Their response felt like a threat and my concerns were completely dismissed and it strained our relationship from the very beginning. They said that at the thirty-minute screening that all students attend, she met expectations in all areas of development, so it would be highly unlikely for her to qualify. Instead of testing, we should just wait till the fall. I did not want to wait, knowing that the earlier intervention happens, the more effective it is. I persisted. The evaluation results showed that she did qualify. What are the implications for other families with concerns? Should the school be giving out such a strong opinion based on one short interaction? If there were specific policies at the district level, important testing and services would not be overlooked. Furthermore, there have been instances where important information has been omitted or misrepresented by school personnel in reports, altering the meaning and implications. I spoke up and received yet another dismissal from the school. Communication has been a significant challenge. I have repeatedly reached out, seeking updates and information about my child's progress. Regrettably, I have often been met with silence and superficial replies that failed to provide any meaningful insights, as if hoping that I would eventually give up. Throughout the year, I have encountered loopholes in the system that seem to undermine the voice of parents, outside experts and the rights of students. The school's selective consideration of options has resulted in important accommodations and services being neglected. This unfairness must be addressed with updated policies as it places undue burdens on those who are not well-versed in educational law. You can create a policy that does a better job of accepting input from parents and outside specialists, as well as fostering a collaborative partnership with schools and families. I've included more of these examples of challenges in a letter addressed to the school committee and superintendent, along with possible solutions. We can do a better job of showing solidarity for underrepresented communities, such as those with disabilities. It is essential that we create real system and policy change. Thank you for your time and I hope you give my written letter the time and consideration it deserves.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anybody else here for public comment? Come on up. If you could just give your name and village and give me one second. There you go. Okay, welcome.
Hello.
Hi.
My name is Chris Dumas. I am a resident of Centerville. And I am just here to show my support for the Barnstable Public Schools Child Development Center at the Barnstable High School. My family has been a massive, massive, massive beneficiary of this program that we have. The staff there is absolutely phenomenal. We are very, very blessed to have a program like this that allows educators to be able to entrust our most passionate and most important resources that we have with people that we care so much about and that care about our children as well. For those of you that know about the program, it is completely funded by student...
I'm just going to warn you, Chris, this is an executive session.
Yeah.
So, you got to be...
I just would like to be supportive.
That's, I'm just, I'm letting you go, but just kind of just be really careful because we're, it's executive session, this is in public.
Okay.
So, just be careful.
I just...
I'm kind of letting you go against advice, but just do me a favor and kind of be careful.
Yeah, I just want to say that I'm very supportive and I just really, really hope that all of us in the town understand how important this program is to more than just myself, but to many others, including the students of Barnstable Public Schools. Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you. Is there anybody else for public comment? Seeing none, I will now close public comment. Okay, we'll move on to 3.4, School Committee Comments And Subcommittee Liaison Reports. I'll open it up. Kathy?
First of all, I was not able to attend graduation this year and I wanted to extend my congratulations to all the students in the class of 2023 and I wish them well in their endeavors. Subcommittee on the Policy Revision met on May 19. We update, made a few more revisions to the social media policy, which is on the agenda later this evening. We also reviewed policies related to concerns that were expressed at our last meeting about the book donations. The committee discussed several policies at length. Nine policies that were pulled because we felt they were relevant to that conversation. We had a lengthy discussion. We came to the conclusion that the policies that are in place are adequate and that they provide the necessary guidance, as well as the opt-out options that were indicated by some people who spoke. The only changes that were made were a few corrections to one of the policies that had typo or grammatical errors. Our next meeting is Friday, June 9 at 1 o'clock. We will continue with Section J. And that's it.
I like how you cut Kathy out.
Kathy, I only gave three minutes to, too. Anybody else?
Sure.
Yeah.
Speaking of graduation, I know that day's weather was miserable, but it was an honor to be there as a school committee member. I heard so many inspiring speeches from the graduating class while they were reminiscing about their years at BHS. And then to hear all the accomplishments of our seniors that they have attained made one very proud to be part of the Barnstable Schools. And I thought our superintendent made a good call, by the way, to hold graduation at its regular time instead of delaying or postponing. If you remember last weekend, there was really no nice weather at all during the whole weekend. So, I thought it was a good call. And speaking of weather, it was an absolute glorious night to watch Barnstable High School baseball team in their playoff win last Thursday. And our home field looked like a perfect Field of Dreams. Unfortunately, the baseball team lost in the second round of the playoffs, but our baseball team had a fine season nonetheless. And then I also attended BIS's Tier One Gateway Program's Passion Projects last week. I saw Mike Judge there as well. The students were extremely impressive and well-prepared to talk about their projects and their passions. It's always a highlight of being a school committee member to get out and visit the schools, to see the kids and staff in action. So, that's it.
Andre, do you want me to go next? Because you have a presentation? Okay, so I'll go next and you can go last. So, it's kind of the end of the year. It kind of jumped up on me, to be honest with you. I was like, wow, this is our last school committee meeting before the end of the school year. So, first of all, congratulations to all of the 2023 graduates. It was, as Peter said, the weather was not quite... As I was saying to some of the kids, as I was handing them their diploma, I'm like, who would have thought June, in the beginning of June, we'd all be sitting there with our teeth chattering and, but you know what? It was still a great day.
Yeah.
And so, congratulations. Good luck with all of your future endeavors to all of our graduates. And then it's also, I also want to kind of, because it's the end of the year, I want to take an opportunity to thank everybody who's invited us to stuff over the year. It's kind of like, and it's funny because I remember going to the beginning of the year to the summertime, what's it called, leadership? Yeah, yeah, no, the leadership conference. And I go every year and I kind of say, you know, welcome back. And I'm kind of like, listen, with COVID, the school committee felt we kind of got disconnected like everybody else in the world. So, if you could do us a favor and we like coming to stuff, so please invite us to it. I think that kind of worked because, you know what? Compared to last year, we got invited to a lot of stuff, which is...
No doubt about it. I feel guilty not going to some of them.
Yeah, and you know what? We all kind of took our turns, like going to, like Andre and Joe worked during the day, but they were like, Andre talked about stuff he went to at night. So, thank you to all of the staff or all of the folks that invited us to stuff. And don't ever hesitate to invite us. That's kind of the fun part of being on a school committee, is being able to go in and see and do all the things in the school. So, thank you. And also, I'm a retired firefighter, so I wouldn't go without saying to everybody who's next week, is their last week of school for the summer, have a restful and enjoying, enjoyable summer, but please be careful. It's the dad of me and the firefighter and the paramedic in me. Please be careful and have a good summer. And other than that, that's about all I have. Andre, your show.
Thank you, Mike. Mo, the director of the show, does a wonderful job. Again, Barnstable is a large, that's, there's a couple up above that. Couple up above that. Thanks, Mo. Barnstable is a large, it's a diverse and it's a dynamic school district. So, every month, there's a plethora of outstanding activities going on that I want to speak to. So, first of all, at BWB, Grade One participated in the birthday boxes for the Barnstable Public Schools Food Pantry. Now, this is a recent addition. Sarah, you could help me. Red Hawk, the name of the food pantry? Red Hawk Pantry, okay, we'll go with that, but you know, if it's not... So, that's an additional point that I want to highlight in terms of what's going on in our schools. But at BWB, Grade One Birthday Boxes For The Barnstable BPS Food Pantry, next slide. And you can see all of the birthday boxes that they put together and going out in terms of speaking to, not speaking to, addressing the food insecurity that we have in so many communities, particularly Barnstable. Next, at BWB, they had a Memorial Day Ceremony to honor our fallen heroes, attended by Representative Stephen Ziaros, veteran and longtime police officer prior to entering public service as a state representative. Next slide. And so, the students gathered, understanding the importance, the value, the meaning of Memorial Day, making it a day on rather than a day off. Here, we have a group of project-based learning students from Barnstable Intermediate School who visited Barnstable Community Innovation School to share their projects and ideas. Again, so we have students at the biz coming down, the students at the K through three level, developing those connections, developing those relationships and all, under the banner of our project-based learning curriculum. One more slide. And again, this is at the Barnstable Community Innovation School, next slide. Okay, so I was fortunate to attend the spring concert at the high school, which, similar to the winter concert, was out of this world. Again, we talk about opportunities that only came about since we came on the school committee. Really, just taken aback with these presentations, our spring, our winter concert, our spring concert, and as well as our school plays are really absolutely tremendous. Next slide. All right, so these are the students at BUES and their spring concert, next slide. And also, the students at Barnstable Intermediate School are participating in their spring concert, which was tremendous. Okay, again, learning those instruments, those skills in early age. skills in early age. I wish that I had the patience. Continuing on, we're, we're good, Mo. Peter, you had mentioned that you were at the Gateway Tier One Student Showcase at the Barnstable Intermediate School, where students presented their passion projects to community members and staff members. Next slide. And so there we can see our, our very own.
Hey, that's me.
Peter Good.
Get that picture and get him an autograph.
There, you get that picture, autograph. And so, again, Gateway Tier One Student Showcase at the intermediate school, students' passion projects for the community, as well as staff members. If you can go back one, Mo. Thank you so much. Our eighth grade students in the civics class, which I taught at, at the high school in the 2020, 2020, 2021 school year, that year, we will not, we were not able to, because of COVID, go to the Kennedy Institute for Civics Day. Thrilled that it's back. But this is our eighth graders and our 11th graders, again, going to Boston and presenting their civics action project at the Kennedy Institute. Next slide. Okay, and again, it's, it's the presentation, it's the understanding of public's office. We just had Representative Kip Diggs stop by. But for them to get the fullness and that understanding. Is eighth grade a little bit early for them to get the, the full breadth of what it means to be engaged citizens? Maybe. And that's a debate that we have in, in the history, in the history field. But nonetheless, to understand how this class translates to day-to-day life, to be in those seats, and then maybe for them to think about one day being a representative themselves, it's just tremendous. Next slide. Okay, at the high school level, we had two students participate in the Network for Teaching Entrepreneurship. This was a youth entrepreneurship challenge. Our two students made it to the New England Regional Finals, and at this event, these two students made it all the way to the final round themselves. So again, this is at the high school level, our students participating in the Network for Teaching Entrepreneurship. It's a competition, similar to mock trial, regional finals, and they made it all the way to the final round themselves. Final slide, Mo. If we're able to, that's a link? The, the, yes, yes.
How you getting fancy?
Yes, if we can put the volume on. Are we able to get the volume? Possibly, maybe. So this was the seniors' last day at Barnstable High School, so we had an event in the Cobb Astro Park. So again, congratulations to our seniors, but I, that resonated with me, not just because of the, the great event in, in that tremendous space, but because of some of those shots that are, the good people at B2B were able to get, the aerial shots, the drone shots moving away. So again, that was our seniors' last day. So shout out to the seniors, as well as the, the very capable staff with B2B TV.
Excellent job, as always. Look at the smile. You do? I like it. I like it. You reminded me of two things. I'd like to commu-, thank the community for two things. First of all, I went to the seniors' award night, which is for scholarships, and I think it was over $200,000 that the community gave out to our seniors for scholarships. So, once again, just another example of the community takes a village to raise them. You know what? And our community definitely believes in that. So thank you for that. And also, I would be remiss with, everybody knows about me and celebration and the after-prom party. Thank you for all the volunteers that helped. Thank you once again to the community who stepped up and, and made it so it happened and it went off without a hitch. And, but yeah, thank you to the community for that. There was a lot of businesses that gave, and I'd be remiss if I didn't mention them, but thank you very much to them, too. So, once again, the community, I mean, I've lived here for 25 years, and it still amazes me that, how lucky our kids ought to be raised in a community that truly cares about them and gives and helps and all of that. So thank you to everybody. Having said that, we will move on to 3.5 Superintendent's Report.
Great, thank you. So I'll pick up where you left off. There really have been so many wonderful events for the class of 23, as well as all across the district. I cannot take all the credit for that weather decision. Unlike a snow day, which really does truly fall on my shoulders, the graduation decision was a collaborative effort, and there were folks at the high school who participated in making that choice. And it's, like you said, there was really no, no good time. So keep everybody's plans as, as intended. I'll jump in and thank a few folks. I want to pick up where Mike left off, related to the all-night party. I had an opportunity to stop by. It was truly something to behold. And the Judge family, Mike didn't mention the Judge family, of course, he's thinking about the community, but I feel, you know, that it's really important to acknowledge all of their hard work, really year-round, I think, to put the all-night party together. Additionally, there's a lot of folks behind the scenes that people don't realize participate in graduation, including our administrative assistants, the class advisors, the facilities department, our audiovisual specialist, the B2B TV station, our music department, and our first responders. It really does take a team to pull something like that off, and I want to be sure to acknowledge them. And also extend my thanks related to the generosity in the community for the over $200,000 in scholarships. We are heading into June. June is Pride Month, which commemorates the anniversary of the June 28th, 1969 Stonewall Riot in New York City, which was an incident that initiated the modern civil rights movement to support members of the LGBTQ+ community. I have several other updates for the committee and the community this evening. The first is that I wanna share how we shared a draft of our Vision of a Graduate for the first time with faculty and staff at the Professional Development Day on May 26th. It was really wonderful to bring everybody together. We started the year off with convocation and then concluded the year with the first draft of the Vision of a Graduate. I do have a few slides, cause I wanna share it with the school committee tonight, to reflect on your work that you had done in the workshop, as well as preview the next steps. Next slide. As a reminder to the committee, but also informational to the community, the Vision of a Graduate is our system's fingerprint of essential skills our students will need to thrive in their future. It is recognizable and uniquely ours. Our work is guided by two essential questions on the next slide, which is how do we co-design a vision that can sit powerfully at the center of our system and ensure that all of our graduates are leaving with the skills they need to thrive in this rapidly changing world? We begin with this vision. Our next steps are to make it visible and measurable, embedded in our core curriculum, and make it what we're all about. And we're not starting from scratch. I think that was pretty clear tonight, as we heard in the student highlights. And I was sitting here watching the students from Mock Trial and the Leadership Program, as well as the Max Courage Institute. I think you'll see the skills are alive and well, and something to build upon. So here we are in the May-June timeframe with our draft of a Vision of a Graduate. We're presenting it to the community at this time and seeking feedback over the summer and into the fall, when we would look to have a, a final option to bring forward for the committee. Data gathering process began in February with faculty and staff. We had a workshop for school committee in April. We had some focus groups for families in May. We also surveyed students, and they held assemblies as well, and we got information from children grades three through 11. School councils also had an opportunity to contribute, and the LPAC contributed at their most recent May 26th meeting. At this point, we'd like to publish the draft and solicit feedback to faculty and staff, which began at the PD Day. You as school committee members, students in the fall will be kinda reached back out to for their feedback on what we've put together. Families, wanna include CPAC, community members, including elected officials, business leaders, and local agencies and organizations, higher ed like 4Cs, and alumni. What we did to put the draft together was we took the survey and did some analytics. This was Mo Lovett's work. She has been part of the central team. Text analytics were used to determine word frequencies in each response, and then categories were developed with some related ideas listed underneath these primary categories. We had different charts, like the one you're seeing here. This is an example, cause we had these for other stakeholder groups. For example, social-emotional skills really dominated the faculty survey responses. Second was critical thinking. We also, Mo also took word clouds and identified what some of the most common words were, and put those in the word clouds for us to analyze. And so we came up with some big ideas. And this is kind of our first unveiling to the public. The faculty and staff had a chance to process these at PD, where one essential skill coming forward is the idea that students are self-aware graduates or inner explorers, with associated skills of personal development, growth mindset, resilience, self-management, and emotional regulation. That they're knowledge seekers. Foundational knowledge came up a lot across multiple stakeholder groups. This would include multiple types of literacy, like numeracy and reading, but also modern literacies, like digital literacy. Real-life skills came up a lot, physical and mental health and SEL. Thoughtful communicator included empathy and perspective-taking, giving and getting feedback, listening, building relationships, collaboration, consensus-building, and conflict management. Something came up at the workshop, which was agreeing to disagree. So while you might not see agreeing to disagree here, that was something I took away and thought would fold into this thoughtful communicator area. Adaptive thinker includes problem-solving, creative and critical thinking, and lifelong learning, as well as being optimistic, but also realistic in thinking. And taking action. You heard a little bit about the civics projects tonight. Doesn't need to be solely in a social studies realm, but taking action for local and global impact. Again, I think the Vision of a Graduate does have a foundation and stuff that's already happening and things that we can build on. Andre just shared a few examples of that, like with the Red Hawk Food Pantry, which for some reason I stumbled over. Application of Skills and Civic Mindedness. So, this is just the first draft. There's certainly an opportunity for people to contribute their, their thoughts. We will share an opportunity with you for your feedback as school committee members, and we'll incorporate that into its next iteration. Okay, I have a couple other things. I wanted to provide this as a point of information to the committee. The Enoch Cobb Trustee, Steve Heslinga, has requested that the Cobb Astro Park be renamed and rebranded. Over this first year here in Barnstable, I've invested in learning about the park from those closest to its development between 2004 and 2021. I wanna thank Steve for being a thoughtful partner over the course of this year. I also want to thank him for the support of the park and its history, as well as his continued commitment to supporting the park in the future. What's kind of emerged is that there's an association with the Cobb name that has come to imply management and oversight of the park by the Cobb Trust, which seems to be a source of misunderstanding in the community. Over the years, the park's opportunities have expanded beyond the realm of astronomy, which some may say makes the word "astro" in the title somewhat limiting. The idea of rebranding brings both some sadness, but also, I think, could be a hopeful moment as well. The park has clearly been a meaningful space for educational enrichment opportunities for decades, and although I was not here to witness the transformation firsthand, I've come to learn about the brilliant process of taking the space from a desolate interior courtyard into a beautiful sanctuary for artwork, astronomical study, pathway of discovery, meditational labyrinth, place for silent reflection, and a classroom amphitheater. Hundreds of community members and organizations have contributed to its development, including art and bench donations, the donation of labor, supplies and materials, and monetary contributions. Contributions of Barnstable High School students played a significant role in the development of the space under the close guidance and vision setting by longtime teacher Mike Guyra. Additionally, the space wouldn't be what it is without the dedication of Cobb trustees David Cole and Steve Heslinga. The district and Barnstable High School have experienced numerous changes within the past few years, including turnover of staff, including the retirement of Mike and Mary Guyra, as well as the graduation of many students who would've participated in the development of the park. A rebranding effort that engages members of the current Barnstable High School community and interested community members could help a new generation of BHS graduates coalesce around a shared, expansive framework for the park with an investment not seen in the most recent couple of years. I would offer that alignment to the Vision of a Graduate as a logical connection to be making. I shared this information with BHS faculty and staff and want to share it with you this evening. I envisioned an effort in the fall to begin rebranding, a rebranding process of this very special school resource by current community members. As for the school committee, any new name would come to the committee for formal consideration pursuant to Policies FF, naming new facilities, and FFA, naming school facilities and grounds. And then my last item for this evening is just a recap of the Mass Association of School Superintendents Spring Meeting. I attended, I think it was two weeks ago at this point, and there were three agenda items and focus areas. The first was Massachusetts Chiefs of Police Association joined us and will again be joining us this summer at the Executive Institute to talk about school, school security. They recently issued a best practices guide, and they discussed the importance of the school superintendent and Chief of Police Relationships. It's not written on my document, but I do really have a lot of respect for Chief Sonnenbend and have appreciated his close connection and communication all year. And I do wanna give the Barnstable Police Department a big, a big thanks for this year. And I do, I do think that we have and maintain a good relationship. The main keynote speaker was Kathleen Federico, Senior Vice President from the MITRE Corporation, who presented on building a systemic culture of change for diversity, equity, and inclusion. And the, kinda the essential question was how can we take these business practices and apply them in the school setting? And then following the keynote, Claire Abbott, the Director of Educator Effectiveness at DESI, presented the new teacher and principal evaluation tools. And there was a panel of practitioners who shared what they've learned working systemically to see better classroom practice related to student engagement and cultural competence. There were facilitated table talks as well for us to engage with our colleagues. In a couple of weeks, Kristin Harmon, Assistant Superintendent, and I will be attending the MASs Conference in Mashpee, where more of these types of meetings and workshops will be held along some of these same themes. And that concludes my report.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Are there any questions?
No, not, just a statement.
Okay.
I guess, as Sarah was talking about, the Cobb Astro Park, and it's certainly true. I just need to say this, cause I was at the high school for many years, and it's true that hundreds of community members and staff and students were all involved in the creating of the Astro Park, but the leadership really came from the Guyras. And anybody that was at the high school certainly is aware of that. And Mike Guyra was tru-, it was his passion, that's for sure. And it continued even in his retirement, as they, you know, they continued installing plaques and helping with the maintenance plans and, you know, giving various input, just to name a few. And, you know, I don't know what the new name should be, but the Guyra Park would be a consideration, in my humble opinion. So, thanks, Mike and Mary Guyra.
Yeah, thanks, Peter. I just wanna echo, you know, that statement in terms of being a Barnstable graduate. I've noted this before. I have no problem noting it again, what the space was, what the space became, and it being a priority of mine when I came on to the school committee to, to maintain the, the park and its legacy. So thank you to the Guyras. Peter, I also think about people like Ed O'Toole, Mick Carlin, Ed Sullivan, the teachers, the movers and the shakers that were at the high school in that time that really pioneered the project and the space, and really the transformation of, of the high school. Cause it's the Astro Park, and then it's many of our hallways are decidedly different than what they were through, through those educators' passion and work. So, so thank you. You know, as I've been going through, many people might not know this, kinda behind the scenes, but, you know, it is important to me, and I have been working on this, and many of us have been working on this behind the scenes for some time. So I do have So I do have a couple things to say. But I look at this as, I'm not pleased that this decision has been made to rebrand the Astro Park. I'm not pleased at all. And this idea of breaking from the past is something that I struggle with. If there's a reason to break from the past, then I'll be receptive to it. But as I said, what the space was and how the space has been transformed, I'm not in favor of changing the name of the Cobb Astro Park. The only reason that this notion has any validity with me is because in conversations with the Guyras and Steve Heslinga, it's their wish that the park be rebranded. And so for that reason and only that reason am I receptive to this concept. I think you have to be very careful when you make these type of decisions and consider all factors. Additionally, the idea that any proposed name that we think about is not directly tied...
Well, I'm just going to stop you there. So I think the school committee's role in this is very limited, very, very limited. Our role in this is, we, our role in this is to rename it, not rename it, to approve a renaming, period. That's our only, our policies. Our policies are very simple. We only, as a matter of fact, I believe the Cobb Astro Park never even came to the school committee to get named. So that in itself was a problem because it was never brought to the school committee back then to be named, which is the only role the school committee has in this, is to name it. So there will be a process. We will probably be kept up to date on the process, but the process is not for us to say yes or no. I mean, you can have your own opinion, don't get me wrong. I mean, obviously, you can have your own opinion. But as far as policy-wise, we'll probably be given updates. But as far as per policy, our only thing is not even to be involved in the process of how they're going to rename it, is when there's a name, it comes to us and we decide yes or no, we're going to accept the name. That's our, but I just want to make it perfectly clear to the public that that is our, that is our process, that is our role in this whole thing.
Understood, Mike. And that's been something that I have worked through in my...
And I know, because you and I have talked.
In my oversight and efforts, you know, in relation to the Cobb Astro Park and the other work that we do in the district. Nonetheless, making it perfectly clear how I feel about this decision is one. Yes, it is true that this falls under the purview of our superintendent. And it's when we talk about, you know, the superintendent being the CEO, this is the superintendent's decision and her direct oversight. We, as a school committee, have oversight over expenditures. So the superintendent is the CEO of how those expenditures are dispensed, but we oversee those expenditures, and of course, we evaluate the superintendent. So in terms of the hierarchy, that's not anything that, there's no confusion in that for me. I'm just making it clear that not only is this unfortunate, but as we proceed forward, yes, the superintendent can make the final decision, but it's one that's going to be scrutinized heavily.
Yep, go ahead. Push it down.
So I just wanted to make a clarification because you weren't here probably last year when some of this was done, nor was the superintendent. The Cobb name belongs to the trust, so the trust can withdraw that name and not endorse that park anymore. And that's basically the history of where this decision is coming from, is that that was brought forward last year. We tried to negotiate something. It didn't end in the way that some of us wanted it to. But Mr. Heslinga, as the trustee, has the right to withdraw that support and the name, not unlike when the Boston Garden has changed names and sponsorship over the years. This is a similar situation, if I would suggest that. So again, this is the wish of the Cobb Trust, not necessarily the superintendent or the committee.
Understood, Jane. And that's the only reason why I'm receptive to it, as I said. I don't want to hold the floor for too long. I do have a couple additional things that I want to say. Mike, your point's well taken, but again, these things matter.
Oh, and I understand that we have, I mean, we can have our opinion. I understand that.
Sure, sure.
I mean, that's not what I'm saying to you. What I'm saying, though, is, is we don't have to even get an update. We don't have to get an update until the very end, when it's time to put on an agenda to have the name changed, and that's the end of it. It's not up to us to decide how the, I mean, we can certainly weigh in our own opinion as to how we think it should be changed, or what we think the name should be, or how the process should work. I mean, I'm not saying that. But at the end of the day, it's up to the way the process is, is in the way our policies are written, which is what guides us, is simply that we are, in your comment, I mean, if you don't like the way the process is done, and at the other end, when they bring a name back to us, you could say, no, I don't like the way this process was done, and I don't, I won't agree to it. And if it's a three to two vote against it, then you're, then you're right. That's, I mean, you know, you know how this works. So like I said, I just caution about, I caution because I'm always about just following the policies and being really careful about following the policies, and I think I'm pretty careful about doing that for everything. I'm kind of like really, really tight about following the policies because I think without following the policies, you kind of go into, there's nothing to govern us, you know?
Understood. There's no debate here about the division of labor or the policies and parameters that we operate under as a school committee and as a district. Speaking as somebody that's been involved in this process, I'm putting forth my perspectives on this process, which I can do, but there's certainly no confusion in terms of how the process is going to work out over time. Again, this, not, the decision that we're moving forward, we're rebranding, there's a break from the past is unfortunate, is unfortunate to me. But nonetheless, this is where we are. You know, I'll kind of, I don't want to hold the floor for too long, but I just want to kind of bring up some specifics, you know, in that, you know, what, how are we, you know, because you're talking about the Cobb Astro Park, it's on the agenda. I just want to note something specifically, and then we can...
Say, point of order?
It's not on the agenda.
It's not on the agenda.
Oh, it's not on the, it's not on...
Nope. This was her giving us a simple update. This is just a simple update to her to let the, actually, it wasn't even an update necessarily for us. It was to let the public know that the Cobb Astro Park, Cobb, wants to have their name taken off of it. That's, this was not an agenda update. This isn't necessarily even for debate. This, well, it isn't, it's not necessarily, there is no debate. She was giving the public, kind of letting them know what we kind of already knew. You know what I mean? So that's, this isn't, this isn't an agenda item. This isn't up for, she was bringing it up in her report, as she said, for the public because she doesn't want all of some people to go to the, as it's now named now, the Cobb Astro Park, and all of a sudden have Cobb and maybe Astro Park taken off, or nothing there. And people being like, what happened? So the superintendent is giving the public an update that this is what's happening, and she went through the process of what was agreed upon between the Cobb Astro Park and, or Cobb and everybody involved, what they all agreed that the process should be, and that's all this was, was just an update from her to give to the public of what the process is going to be. So people who have been involved for all these years can realize it, and they can maybe get involved in the process. Like, I mean, they can get involved with it. Kids are going to get involved with it, just so people don't, aren't blindsided next fall when all of a sudden there's this question, and it comes up to their kids saying, what do you think the, what do you think that space should be named? That's what this was, was an update.
Understood. And so that's a further conversation about making it an agenda item so we can have a more full, a more full conversation. It's a further conversation, and we're obviously in a live meeting, so those things that they can happen behind the scenes. And they will happen behind the scenes because this is something that needs to be addressed. It needs to be addressed, and we need to have, I'm not for, just in conclusion before, I concede the floor. You know, when there's big things, when there's big opportunities, and we're working through things, you know, the idea that, well, there's 5,000 students and over 700 staff, and there's 10 fields, and there's all these things going on, so because there's big things going on, we can't do specific things. I think that's where my frustration with this comes in. That's not an excuse for our district, because we're a large district, to not be able to get things done. That's the statement that I want to make. And again, as I concede the floor, I think we do need to have the Cobb Astro Park be an agenda item so we can have a full and robust conversation, specifically now that we're at a transitionary moment, and we're going to rebrand a space that is so distinctive for us in Barnstable. I, for one, any new name for the Cobb Astro Park needs to be tied to the origins and founders of said park.
I disagree. I think it has to do, has to have to do with the, well, you know what? I'm not going to get into it because that's not for this discussion tonight. That's not for the discussion tonight. That's for later on. Anybody else have any questions? No? Okay. Moving on to 3.6, Assistant Superintendent Report. Kristin.
Thank you very much. Okay, so I have a couple items. So some are going to tag on to other comments made earlier. We did have the senior awards night last week. We also had the junior book awards yesterday afternoon at the high school. Students in the junior class were recognized for academic excellence, involvement and impact on the school community, civic and community involvement, and so forth. The number of students recognized was impressive and certainly foreshadows some great accomplishments to come during their senior year. And I think they're already feeling like they're seniors because now the seniors are gone. So, but it was just really fun to see them in this, I think they took it very seriously. It's kind of that next step. Jumping off of Andre's conversation about the Nifty Network for Teaching Entrepreneurship New England Youth Entrepreneurship Challenge, as the pictures that Andre shared, the high school was represented by two students, Trinise Clegg and Charlotte Furman, at the event that was held last night at the Bose Corporate Headquarters in Framingham. I heard the food was out of this world. This was the final round of the regional competition. During the round, students presented their business plans that they developed during the course of the entire school year in front of business professionals, students, and Nifty alumni. Trinise Clegg pitched her mobile app, Find My Way, which is a GPS of sorts that helps students navigate their way through schools. She is a new student to the high school this year, so maybe that could have been the crux of it. And walked away with some prize earnings, which included two Red Sox tickets. Charlotte Furman pitched her app, Stepping Stones Daycare, which provides families with high-quality, high-quality daycare with flexible hours of care. Charlotte finished in the top four of the students that were invited, and has, again, earned some prizes as, along with her, she'll be representing Barnstable in the Nationals in New York City in October. So congratulations to both Trinise and Charlotte. As Sarah mentioned, we had, the Vision of the Graduate was presented at our professional development, which was on May 26th. It was our final half-day in-service for the year. This was used to present the draft vision of the graduate, with the remainder of the afternoon dedicated to school-based professional development. So just sharing some feedback from the professional development. From the survey, we had 454 responses, which I think was probably one of our best responses. Eighty-four percent were licensed educators, 14% para-professionals, 2% administrative assistants, which really does parallel the overall distribution of the staff, those staff roles. In response to the question, was the PD relevant to their role and responsive to needs of the school and district, 24% strongly agreed, 42% agreed, 26% were neutral, 4% disagreed, and 2 strongly disagreed. The most valuable topics that were identified were vision of the graduate, the school-based PD that was offered, and curriculum work, just as a specific. In addition, we used the survey as an opportunity to collect some additional data regarding PD planning for next year. In particular, preferences for professional development beyond the half-day and full-day in-service days in the calendar. We asked about a preference for PD during the school year versus the summer. 62% preferred school year, 9% summer, 24% no preference. Weekdays versus Saturdays, 75% preferred weekdays, 6% Saturday, 19% no preference. And then we do have the option of providing staff with in-service credits that can be applied to the salary scale. So we wanted to get a sense of, you know, how appealing are these in-service credits verse, sorry, verse graduate credits that are, if we were to partner with an institution? So certainly, 55% preferred the grad credits, 15% in-district credits, 30% didn't have a preference. So I think there's a lot of work to get that partnership going, but I think it gives us a trajectory of where we'd like to go, with maybe in-service credits being an intermediary step. Because, you know, if I take no preference, we have a good deal of people that I think would take either. So this information will be very helpful in providing us direction as we plan the professional development for next year, for our half-days and beyond. Some of this planning is already well underway, with more discussions to be taking place on June 22nd, when we meet with principals, assistant principals, and directors. And then finally, as Mike noted, we are heading into the summer. So as the school year quickly comes to a close and thoughts turn to summer, our schools are still busy places to be, and our staff are engaging in a good deal of work over the course of the summer. So I wanted to provide you with just a couple of, some of the things that will be taking place beyond our typical programs. We have our extended school year programs for our special education students. We have our 21st Century program at Hyannis West. But we also have summer enrichment, enrichments that will be offered. We're in the third year of being able to offer Barnstable Public School students summer enrichments through our ESER grants. A requirement of ESER fund use is to offer additional learning opportunities outside of the school day. We open this up to staff at each school to propose enrichment opportunities at their respective schools. These enrichments can address academic and social-emotional learning gaps, the goals to get kids face-to-face interacting with one another, and whatever particular content they identify. Educators are definitely in the driver's seat in terms of development, planning, and facilitation of these enrichments. They've been well-attended, and students have just been really engaged in these in the past, so looking forward to this summer as well. We have 14 enrichments being offered across five schools. Just a few, to name a few, we have Nature Lovers Camp, Summer Band, Let's Grow Together, STEAM Camp, Reader's Theater, Happy Campers, just to name a few. So without giving the descriptions of those, which I'm happy to share with you, but really a wide range of offerings. We have a number of staff who have applied for and will be engaging in summer curriculum writing. The curriculum writing project span pre-K to 12, in a range of content areas, core and enrichment. The majority of these projects are for new courses that are being offered in 2023, 24, so obviously that curriculum is absolutely necessary, and a number of projects supporting the PBL work that's been happening at Barnstable Intermediate School. We also are offering summer PD to staff. This is in an effort to really reinvigorate our summer PD. Historically, we've had a summer PD institute. We've had some offerings presented and just haven't had the sign-ups. So this year, it was what are our greatest needs? So the feedback from the surveys were, we need those offerings that are going to help us get our recertification, get our licenses renewed. So we had two. We focused on the SEI requirements and special ed differentiation requirements, along with a mentor training, which we as a district need, and trauma-based instruction. And so they are, I'm so happy to say they're all going to run because we have enough sign-ups. And I'm still waiting for more to come. Registration's closed June 9th. And finally, Summer Acceleration Academy. I've shared with you our Vacation Acceleration Academies. We have run the Summer Acceleration Academies in the past through grant funding from the state. We are applying for the Summer Acceleration Grant also due June 9th. Should we be awarded the grant, we'll be holding the Acceleration Academy for both math for grades four and five and early literacy grades two and three. So that's the add-on that we don't have on the vacations. This will be during the last week in August, as we have done the last two years, before school begins. It's been a great opportunity for kids to kind of reset and get ready to return to school after summer. And where we're getting out a little early this year, it might not feel like it's, you know, infringing... know, infringing upon their summertime. And that's all I have for today.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Any questions? Seeing none? Okay. We will move on to Old Business. 4.1 Create Policy IJNDD Social Media. Kathy.
So for those of you who remember, the social media policy was sent back to the committee to address a few items. The committee clarified the language for staff who need to communicate with individual That revision was sent back out district-wide for input. I believe there was one person who had a question, but there were no other comments. So I received no other feedback. That question was directed to the superintendent. It was answered. There was no other feedback. So I would like to move to create policy.
Actually, can I just ask a question? Just point of order. Sorry. Sorry. Jane, do we, because were things -- so things would change from last month to this month in the policy. Should we have this be a first read or can we have this be the second read even though there were changes?
Doesn't need to be a second read because the whole purpose of a first and second read is--
Is it changes in the middle? Okay, nope. That makes sense. Nope, you're right. That makes sense.
If it were something major--
Then right, but there was no major, nothing major.
And it was sent back out district-wide for feedback?
No, you're right. You're right. That's what between the first and second read is to make changes. So you're off. Sorry, Kathy.
That's all right. No apologies. So I would move to create policy IJNDD Social Media as presented in tonight's materials.
I'll second.
Having a motion seconded. Is there any comments or questions? No, everybody's all set? Okay. Having a motion seconded. This is a voice vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Eyes have it unanimously. 4.2 Revised Policy JFABF Educational Opportunities for Children in Foster Care. Kathy.
This is a second read, and there was no feedback from anyone between meetings. So I would move to approve the revised policy JFABF Educational Opportunities for Children in Foster Care as presented in tonight's materials.
I'll second.
Having a motion seconded. Any questions? Seeing none. Voice vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Eyes have it unanimously. 4.3 Revised Policy JICFB Bullying Prevention. Kathy.
This is a second read of the policy, and again, there were no, there was no feedback between last meeting and this meeting. Therefore, I move to approve revised policy JICFB Bullying Prevention as presented in tonight's materials.
I'll second.
Any questions? Seeing none. Having a motion seconded. This is a voice vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Eyes have it unanimously. Moving to New Business. 5.1 Revised the 2023-2024 School Calendar. Sarah?
It has my name next to it, but--
Yes, I can frame it. So the 23-24 calendar is before you for a revision. Despite going out very widely and broadly, there were actually 181 student days counted instead of 180. And so this revision moves the last day from June 24th to June 21st while keeping the first day of school the same. The other thing that happened since you approved this in January is that the MCAS schedule came out and the February 7th PD half-day and the March 8th PD half-day conflict with the MCAS schedule as released by the Department of Education making that problematic. So the revision includes moving the half-day in February to Friday, the 9th, and the half-day from March 8th to Wednesday, March 13th. And so with that, would hope that you would consider approving the revisions.
Okay. Do we have any questions? Seeing none. Can I get a motion?
Move to approve the revised 2023-2024 School Calendar as presented in tonight's materials.
Having a motion seconded. This is a voice vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Eyes have it unanimously. Moving on to 5.2 Creation of Hope Squad Advisor Stipend and Positions at Barnstable High School. Sarah.
Great. Thank you. So we're really excited about the possibility of bringing this program to Barnstable High School. I know Mary Beth Shea, our Executive Director of SEL and Student Services, is here, having just attended some of the trainings herself with, in collaboration with the Sharing Kindness nonprofit, which is here on the Cape. The Hope Squad is a program related to mental health and specifically suicide prevention. It's a school-based peer support team. I think we've seen models over and over again, like peer mediation and peer leadership, where students really have more impact on each other sometimes than the adults do. But of course, they need trusted adults in their lives to help guide them. But this school-based peer support team would include peer, would include select students who are trustworthy and caring individuals to join the Hope Squad. They are trained to watch for at-risk students, provide friendship, identify suicide warning signs, and seek help from adults. The models that we've seen would include advisors from the faculty. And so the proposal here is for five faculty advisors at the high school, one for each grade. That's about the ratio that other schools are using. And I want to say there's 15 districts that are joining the Hope Squad, so we'll have a nice regional, kind of a nice regional collaboration, including Monomoy and Falmouth. We have talked with the BTA and think that this would fall in the range of the stipends that currently exist of $1,285. We're looking for that stipend to be set and five advisors in terms of positions. They are, we're looking to get this approved this evening so we can post and get people prepared for a training in August. The training and curriculum materials are being provided by Sharing Kindness as well as the after-school, not after-school, the at-risk dropout prevention grant is taking care of the curriculum and the materials. The stipends, we have some grant funding through ESAR to be able to support stipends for the next year while we evaluate the impact of the program. The research findings are pretty compelling in terms of its impact, not only related to addressing mental health and reducing suicide risk, but also in the overall culture of the school. So I'm happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Any questions?
I'm just curious. The training, does somebody come in to do the training with the students or are our faculty or whoever the advisors are trained and then they train our students?
The advisors train our students. And so the training in August is for the advisors to then bring back the training to the students. And they would be trained also to formally bring some curriculum to their classmates through the advisories. So it's, there is kind of a formal, there's formal lessons that they would be implementing through advisory.
How many, oh, go ahead, Andre.
Yeah, you mentioned the different roles that take place in terms of students, to student-to-student support, you know, peer mediation, peer leadership. This seems to be a throughway, you know, from all those. My only question was, how is that possibly connected? Because it may be some of the same students that are doing peer mediation and peer leadership that would fill these roles, and that's fine? You know, these students, they're participating, they're engaged, you know, they're helping. And this service, you know, the reason that I'm in favor is because, you know, it's necessary to get in, you know, students aren't always going to confide these deeply troubling things to adults in their lives. But they need to, as we express these things, to get the support that they need. So that was my only question in terms of how, it seems to be symmetrical with these other student-supported, student-led groups, but how is that playing out?
So I think one of the things that I note about this is that these are, it's probably six to seven, but I think it could be even more than that, eight to 10 squad members per grade. So I think it's providing an opportunity for students in all grades to take on some leadership roles, where sometimes I think we see the older students taking it on. I think like the peer mediators are mostly juniors and seniors. I could be wrong about that. And the peer mediators, we had seven trained peer mediators this year. I think we aspire to more, but between peer mediation and the Hope Squad, you know, I think the numbers might fall into play where I think there's plenty of opportunities for different students and not necessarily relying all on the same ones. But we can keep an eye on that for sure.
You answered my question. My question was, how many kids? So like you said--
Six to seven.
Six to seven per grade. Okay. Sounds good. Thank you.
Yeah, just a question, Mike.
Yeah.
I thought I heard you say this is grant-funded for one year? Did you, did you say?
Yeah, so we'll get the curriculum and materials and the training this year through private sources. That is more sustainable, particularly if we have repeat advisors. These stipends would be grant-funded for one year. We would certainly seek out additional funding, possibly consider putting in the operating budget in the next year, but it is something that we'll have to be mindful of.
And evaluate whether this program is, you got enough six or seven kids and--
Yeah.
How often does, how often do they meet? Like the faculty advisor or--
So advisors are slated to meet with the Hope Squad two to four times a month after school, kind of similar to some of our clubs.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. I'm not having any other questions. We will, can I get a motion?
Move to create five Hope Squad advisor positions at Barnstable High School as presented.
I'll second.
Having a motion. Any other questions? Having a motion seconded. Voice vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Eyes have it unanimously. Second motion.
Move to create the Hope Squad advisor stipend at Barnstable High School in the amount of $1,285 each for a total of $6,425.
I'll second.
Having a motion seconded. Any other questions? Seeing none. Voice vote. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. Eyes have it unanimously. Moving on to 6.1 Facilities Conditions Assessment Presentation. Welcome. Come on down. You can either sit or you can stand, whatever you gentlemen would like to do.
So we're going to sit?
Okay.
So Mike Lambros, Barnstable Schools Facility Director, here with Chip Phillips. I'm going to hand it over to him first, but this project's been going on about the past eight months. Last August it began. Chip and his team have been evaluating our facilities, and this is phase one of their assessment. We will be back in July. So I'll hand it over to Chip.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So as Mike said, we started out last summer with the process. There's several components. The first is a conditions assessment, looking at all the schools and what the repair needs are, what needs to be fixed, upgraded, replaced. That's what we're going to focus on today, so it's really fixing what is existing. We're also taking a look at space utilization and recognizing the space needs across the schools, and then we'll integrate that with future enrollment projections so that we really do understand what the future space needs. And from that, we'll put together a plan to address the needs across the district. So, you know, that's, that will be kind of the process going through over the next couple of months.
Yeah, so just so everybody knows, what it is, is instead of doing it all in one night and having a really long presentation, we kind of, Sarah kind of was like, why don't we break it into two, like, just kind of like, make it easier for us? And like, after watching this, you go back and look at it. If you have questions for next month, it kind of puts it in the two months. So that's kind of what we kind of all, they all agreed on making it just over two months. So we'll have another part of it in July.
Right. So just kind of quick overview. We did take a look at all nine of the schools as well as the facilities buildings, so 10 buildings in total. That is over a million square feet, which is a relatively large district in the air, you know, in Massachusetts. So that is, you know, I think important to understand that it is, that there is a number of schools and some of them are very large. The high school's very large. The process is that we started in the summer, ended in the fall with our actual inspections. From there, we've been working on developing projects, pricing, prioritizing, presenting, you know, providing the information to the facilities folks in particular. We, I met with each of the principals to talk about the conditions and how the conditions of the school affects their programs, because, you know, it is not only a physical issue, but it does impact what they're trying to do. So all of that is pulled in. We looked at all of the major building components, the exterior shell, the roofs, the doors, windows, walls. We looked at the interior finishes, the carpeting, the ceilings, interior doors, casework. We looked at the HVAC systems, the electrical systems, plumbing systems. We looked at, you know, it wasn't a code review, but we looked at code issues related to fire separation, fire safety, Americans with Disabilities Act. And we looked at grounds, primarily related to paving and those kinds of things as well. So wanted to be comprehensive. Additionally, met with, you know, for instance, the IT folks to make sure that we're understanding the needs of the IT infrastructure moving forward. Because again, that's, can be a big-ticket item. So really trying to be as comprehensive as we can so that we're laying out all of the needs related to the repairs. We did identify over a million proj, oh, I'm sorry, over 1,000 individual projects across the schools. Some of them are very small, a couple hundred dollars just to fix something. Some of them are millions of dollars for, you know, roof replacements and HVAC and those kinds of things. So it's a big, broad range, but over 1,000 individual items across the 10 schools, 10 buildings. Feel free to ask questions along the way, too, if you want. That's, I prefer that. So in total, the needs we identified were about $132 million. You know, that is a big number. We do prioritize things, you know, based on rough orders of magnitude, you know, orders of urgency. So kind of the priority one is those things that should be attended to in the first three years, and that's about $73 million. Priority two would be the items that should be addressed in the four-to-five-year range. That's another $25 million. And then the priority three are those things that are down the road, that you should start planning for, that could continue to be deferred or maybe grandfathered, but you want to know that they're out there, and that's another $35 million. So like I said, though, you know, it's a big number, but when you look at it across all of the square footage, the total need is about $125 per square foot, and that priority one need is about $69 per square foot. Now, in reality, those numbers are on the lower side of what we usually see. So to give you that perspective. You know, ultimately, you know, our feeling, and we'll get into more of the details, but the schools are well-maintained, but, you know, they're aging. They're, some of the last major renovations were in the 90s. You know, that's, you know, that's getting older. You know, that some of the buildings were originally built in the 50s and early 60s. So we're starting to see kind of that cyclical nature of systems. HVAC systems, for instance, is something that they've got a general useful life cycle, both in terms of age as well as technology. Technology on HVAC systems related to controls, related to efficiency, has changed significantly in the last 20 years. And, you know, those are some of the things we're starting to see in these buildings. As we look across those major building systems that I mentioned, the highest total need is in the HVAC systems. And that really is across the board. Most, you know, some of the, obviously, you know, priority one is about half of that. There are schools that have higher priority one needs, such as the, you know, Barnstable Intermediate School, Barnstable United, Hyannis West are some of the schools that have the high priority HVAC needs. But, you know, also, a lot of that is down the road. The priority three, it's got the highest component of priority three as well. The second highest component that also does have the highest priority one need is the exterior shell. A lot of that is roofing and windows. You know, roofing the high school, Centerville, Intermediate School, all have, you know, higher-party roofs and then windows. all have, you know, higher priority roofs, and then windows at Centerville also are a big problem. So, you know, those are, those again, are large systemic, big projects that, you know, it's hard to piecemeal those.
Mike, Centerville Elementary windows, wasn't that, didn't we talk about it at some point? Like, is that in the five-year plan, or was that? I remember having that be a conversation, because I remember how much it was gonna be, and it was like, wow, not like replacing a window at your house. So can you just kind of talk about that one?
Yep. Yeah, we currently have an appropriation of a million coming that we just received from the town council this year.
So that's gonna be available as of July?
As of July, yeah.
Okay.
That's gonna help finish up the BCIS windows, whatever the first million didn't cover, and then, yeah.
Move on to Centerville?
Focus is Centerville next, yeah.
Okay. So some of these high priorities that you're talking about, and I guess I'm asking both of you, but maybe more Mike, is, so a lot of these highs, well, not a lot, but some of these high priorities are already in our, are already in our plan to be, I know like the HVAC, like, I know that that's been a, I think a plan, so as long as I've been on the school committee, it seems like we've always been replacing the HVAC units at different places. So some of these high priorities are already, like, on the radar and
Correct.
in the chute to get fixed?
Correct. For example, one of the largest HVAC priority ones is BIS, and we're currently working on the design for 22 rooftop units there.
You know, and it's interesting, looking at HVAC is, it has changed tremendously. The expectations, the need for cooling, for additional outside air, is all part of today's HVAC. So it's no longer, you know, you've got a rooftop unit, you replace rooftop unit, you move on. The systems are much more integrated, the expectations are much greater. So, you know, there really does need to be a more holistic look at systems in schools, rather than just piecemeal replacing things along the way. So that, again, adds to it as well. The next area is electrical. You know, many of these schools were not built for the electrical demands today. And also, some of these HVAC projects have additional electrical needs beyond what was expected, related to ventilation and air conditioning. So a big component of that is upgrading services, adding additional outlets, and as needed, adding data outlets, upgrading Wi-Fi, you know, the wireless access points. Lighting is a big component, going to high-efficiency lighting, and controls, all of that is part of the electrical systems. Interior shell is primarily the finishes. So, you know, where you're seeing sagging two-by-four ceiling tiles, you're seeing the vinyl floor tiles that are all cracking along the way. It's starting to address those things. Interior doors that are delaminating, those are the kinds of issues that we see on the interior shell. The others are much smaller. Grounds, again, is primarily paving. There's also some irrigation issues and other types. Plumbing is, you know, actually less related to bathrooms, because many of your bathrooms are fairly dated. So we actually put those in the interior shell, because it's more of a renovation than just replacing plumbing fixtures. But plumbing includes some of the sanitary systems that are problematic in the schools, drinking fountains, those kinds of things. Statutory is sprinkling buildings that aren't sprinkled, updating fire alarm systems, adding latching hardware, magnetic hold opens to assembly spaces, to make sure that we're, that you're improving your code issues. And then accessibilities is, accessibility is related to the Americans with Disabilities Act. You're in pretty good shape there, but there are, you know, for instance, at BCIS, you know, you've got those old chair lifts going up the stairs, really should have an elevator. So it's some of those kinds of things. And bathroom upgrades, where there may not need to be bathroom upgrades because of condition, but strictly because of ADA. Looking at the schools, the actual cost by school, you can't really look at it on total dollars, because the schools are so very different. You can't compare the high school, you know, with, with Barnstable West Barnstable on a dollar standpoint. They're just completely different. So we like to look at that. We take that total identified need and divide it by the square footage of the school. That allows you to get a relative comparison. So in doing that, we see that Centerville is the school with the highest relative need at about $182, $182, $182 a square foot. You know, there, we mentioned the windows, the roof, lighting. HVAC is part of that priority three need there. But it's a, you know, it's, it's a 1950 school that, you know, hasn't had as much attention as some of the others, and you're starting to see that in this cost per square foot. The second highest, actually was somewhat surprising, the Barnstable West Barnstable, because of work that was done there. And, you know, so you see that there, the priority one need there is very low. But again, it's an old school. There were, some items were attended, a lot weren't. It still has steam heat, for instance. So the HVAC system really should be updated there, as well as, you know, some of the, there's still some roofing that wasn't done and some of the earlier work. So completing that out. The Barnstable Community Innovation School, again, is an old 1950s school with a lot of different needs going forward that, you know, in all of the major areas. And as far as next steps, as mentioned, we need to finish out the space utilization. So as part of my discussions with the principals, I collected information related to the usage of the schools, how many students are in each classroom. And we're analyzing the high school class schedule to identify where there's pressure points, where there's opportunities. So really taking a look at all the schools and understanding how the spaces are currently being used, what spaces they don't have, and, you know, then, then we'll be looking at that, you know, with some assumptions towards the future, in order to identify all of those needs. From that, we'll identify options. Options will include just fixing. It'll include renovations, additions, new construction, in order to try to make sure that we get a affordable plan that meets most of the needs across the district. And that will be, you know, presenting, you know, at a later date.
Excellent. Any questions?
Good, Andre?
Yeah, good.
So this is helpful, very helpful information, somewhat brief, and just in terms of the overall analysis and just the figures, like, well, at the next meeting, you maybe kind of get into, because, you know, the idea, you know, you mentioned that a lot of the work went, was taking place in the 90s. Well, that's when I went to the school.
Mm-hmm.
You know, particularly the high school through the 90s, early 2000s, and then in 2000, they did the intermediate school. But you note, that's a quarter century ago.
Exactly. People always think about those new schools that, you know, are now 20 years old.
I know. You got means we're all getting older.
That does.
So this is very helpful, important, necessary information, but this seems to kind of, you're just laying out the kind of the broad strokes and, but I'm looking forward to the next meeting in terms of getting those individual schools and kind of what you're seeing. That's very helpful information, that, you know, you wouldn't think that the Centerville Elementary's needs would be more than a much larger school, like,
Again, that's on a relative basis.
Okay, gotcha.
So, you know, total dollars is very different. You know, Centerville total dollars is about $9.9 million. The high school's $51.5 million. So that's why it's hard to compare them. That's why we look at that cost per square foot, to understand from a condition standpoint, what needs the most.
Understood. Thank you.
Yep. Excellent. Any other questions? Peter, are you good?
I'm good.
You're okay. Kathy?
Yeah.
You're all set? Okay, excellent. Thank you very much. Sarah, do you have anything to chime in, or you, everything's good?
No, excellent. Thank you. Like I said, I'm glad we kind of did this. I'm glad you guys kind of thought of the two, two meetings, because it's not overwhelming. It's kind of like when you do the budget, and there's just so many numbers coming at you, and it's kind of like, you can digest this part, because this is the repairs and fixing part, which is obviously important. And then you can kind of go on to the enrollment and all of that stuff, space needs on the next one. So thank you very much.
And, you know, assuming that there's going to be thoughts that come up over the next several weeks, as you look at the report and think about it, that will be, you know, we can talk about.
Yeah, thank you for agreeing to come in twice. I apologize for having to come and spend time with us during the summer on Cape Cod, but.
Oh, yeah.
I do have one thing to chime in. I'm sorry, I had a question, but I think I know the answer, but I wasn't here. So there was a previous analysis that was done that included the Bumps River Road School, which we do oversee, and that was in 2019, I want to say?
Correct.
Okay, so that also falls under our purview.
So as far as, you mean, as far as like square footage, we actually would have to add that school in, too? Yeah, because we do the, we do our, we don't, do we do any, isn't it major repairs? We like split it?
Yes. Capital repairs, we coordinate with them. For example, we were here for an entryway system, paving and new curving
Right.
about three months ago. So, yeah, we do the capitals of that project, at that school as well. The collaborative went out for a facilities condition assessment for that building, and they've shared it with us. They received it in 2019.
Okay, back in 2019. Okay. Excellent. Any other, no other questions? Okay, thank you very much. We'll see you again in July.
All right, thank you.
Moving on to 6.2, approve additional funds for portables at High West Elementary and Barnstable Community Innovation Schools. Mike?
Good evening.
We do have a presentation for you. It took a while to get it into board docs and into your packet, because the bids just came in at the end of last week. And Mike, we'll talk a little bit more potentially about the evaluation process, but that's been happening, you know, similar to the last meeting we had, where we were kind of, you know, kind of at the end of the previous week evaluating the bid that came in. That's what happened last week as well. But we want to move this to you tonight, to just keep things rolling, because the portables have been on a delay for some time. So we revised the presentation that we had prepared during that special meeting to talk about the current portable proposal, which you had decided to go back out to bid for purchase. One for a classroom unit at Hyannis West, a four classroom unit at BCIS. The bids came back. We received two. There was an evaluation process. In the bid, there was two alternates that were considered. Mike can talk a little bit more about those and the contract price. So I'm gonna turn it over to him now that we're up and rolling.
Thank you. Yeah, so as Sarah just shared, we went back out to bid. We received these bids last week. They've been evaluated. We currently have two bids. We, the, so as you see here, the base bid for the proposed and the recommended bid is $3,060,000. And this is for purchase for the four classrooms at both schools. We added an alternate.
Can I just ask, just for us people who can't remember, what was, when you gave us the five options across the thing last time, and we were looking, like, there was some of them you couldn't give a price, and there was some of them you kind of gave a ballpark, and I understand that. What was the ballpark, do you remember, for this one?
We estimated 3.6.
Okay, that's, that's what I'm asking, because like, what was the number? I just don't remember the number that we, we approved that, we approved option five to go send out to bid, and you would kind of say, I'm thinking around this much, so that was 3.6?
Correct.
Okay, so that's, in our minds, that's what we were okay with spending back then, was 3.6?
Correct.
Okay, just so I remember. Thank you.
Okay. So the base bid here is $3,060,000. We added two alternates. I just want to note, the alternates do not have to be accepted. If you do accept them, they have to be accepted in order. You can accept just alternate one, you can accept both, but you cannot accept just alternate two.
Can you explain why that has to happen?
That's.
Why you have to accept alternate one?
Those are the master procurement laws.
Okay. All right.
Makes no sense to me either, but. So alternate one was to include concrete piling foundations. This is a more robust foundation, because they're permanent. They're not going to be gone in three years. So there's $125,000. Alternate two is to include two additional classrooms at Hyannis West, for a total of six classrooms at Hyannis West. This is $315,000. So if you were to take the total contract with the base bid, alternate one, alternate two, you're looking at 3.5 million.
Mike, if we go back to that last one, two additional classrooms for tot, for $315,000?
Correct.
I'm not sure I understand that. Two.
So currently at High West, you're getting four classrooms.
Correct.
This is to add two more classrooms. So you'll have six.
They're gonna total of six.
For six, but that seems like an awful inexpensive price, $315,000 for two more classrooms, compared to the four.
So a lot of the, I agree. A lot of this cost is the site work. If you remember from the previous presentation, a lot of the site work, the plumbing, the electrical, hooking up the sewer. So that isn't needed, because with the four, the site work is already done. With two, the site work would be done. But adding the additional two classrooms, there's only two more modular units. So that tells me the installation and.
So it's not the classroom that's expensive, it's all of the stuff to get them there?
It's the site work. It's expensive, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
So these assumptions, similar to what they were before. The options presented focus on short-term solutions, while a long-term facilities plan is developed for implementation, which we just discussed the preliminaries of. Assumption two, ESER funds may be available to offset the cost of portables, reducing the amount of the supplemental appropriation. And option three, the use of, assumption three, I'm sorry, the use of ESER may create additional delays due to the special DESI review slash approval requirements. DESI has been contacted and are aware of the possibility, which may facilitate processing. So we have our three options. Option one is to accept the base bid, $3,060,000. This gets you four classrooms at each site with bathrooms on premise. The estimated delivery is late fall. They're expecting, I think the completion date on the documents were November 22nd, barring any delays. So we currently have $575,154 remaining from an initial appropriation for the project. This will satisfy an 18% contingency, so the net is still $3,060,000. So the next steps would be to request supplemental appropriation from the school savings account, from town council, requires two reads by the town council, 30-day calendar waiting period. Can't read that one. Approximately $1 million in ESER funds may be available, as stated on the previous page. So the estimated start date would be fall.
Can I just ask a question about that?
Yes.
So, and not to you, I guess, to either Chris, maybe, as the finance guy, or Sarah, I'm not sure who that would be. It's up, I'm not sure. But, so the ESER in dealing with DESI is gonna, could delay it, right? That's kind of what it's.
It's a caution.
It may, it may not.
Because it's kind of a little bit out of our control. But Jackie Gillis, in the grants, the grants coordinator, has been in touch with DESI. They're aware of the project. It just would have its own special.
Review, in order to do it.
Review, yeah.
So my question is, can you, can we take all $3,060,000 out of our savings and then replenish it with a million dollars in ESER after the fact? Or does that one, you know what I'm saying? Like, can we move, can we move forward with it and then get DESI's approval after, and realize that that's kind of nervous, because what happens if you don't get DESI's approval? I understand that. But can you, like, can we go forward with the project, not have it delayed, because we're waiting for DESI, and then if they approve it, then take the million dollars? And then if they approve it, then take the $1 million from ESER and put it back into our savings account?
Yes, that's correct. Would make the full appropriation, hoping that the grant funds will come through. If they do come through.
So then we wouldn't have to delay it while waiting for DESI?
Correct.
Okay. And it wouldn't go to the general fund? That would go back to our savings account because that's what we took it out of?
I think the way we'd structure, we'd actually just wouldn't use the entire amount when we set up the account. So we'd set up the account with the assumption that we'd get the additional $1 million from, from grant funds.
Okay.
So that $1 million would just sit, the extra $1 million would just sit and be retained within the school savings account.
Okay, okay, that makes sense. Okay, thank you. So we could kind of, so the whole use an ESER wouldn't necessarily delay, it may not delay us anyhow because Jackie's being forethought and starting the process before we get there. But even if it does kind of delay it, we don't necessarily have to let it delay us because we can kind of put the money forward and then kind of backfill. Okay. Sorry, continue.
Good question. So, option two, and I just want to state, the next steps are the same in all three, so I won't read those. But option two is to accept the base bid plus alternate one. So $3,060,000 for the base bid, $125,000 for the alternate one, still the same estimate, same, $575,154 will satisfy 18% contingency. So the net for option two is $3,185,000. Option two is with alternate one. Alternate one is just the concrete piling foundations.
So, does anybody else have any questions? I feel like I'm kind of, go ahead, Peter.
Not being a builder, these concrete piling foundations, this is something that is absolutely needed, or, I mean, if I, if I want option one, I don't get the additional concrete footings, correct?
Correct. With the base bid, you don't.
And how, is that a safe building?
So does it sit on tires?
No.
I mean, I know, I'm asking, like, so if we don't do the, I guess, so if we're not doing concrete pilings, we're not doing a foundation, is it like going to sit on the tires and the kids like get that thing to?
Concrete blocking, similar to cinder blocks. So the difference is, these pilings will go four feet below grade.
Oh, okay.
They'll be poured concrete. The common word, sonotube. So when you see people, for footings for decks, for sheds, garages, a lot of times you see these. The reason for that is, they're not going to be there for three years. So.
So that's more permanency.
It's a, it's a more permanent installation. We added that in separate as an alternate, knowing that it would be an additional cost. We didn't want to have that in with the base bid because we don't have to accept it. I suggest it, but, because these could be there for 15 years if we need them.
And we could run into problems down the road.
Exactly.
With just cinder blocks underneath it, in 10 years, those are going to start spalling and falling apart, and then we have a problem of having to replace the temporary foundation underneath it.
Correct.
Is that kind of what it comes down to in a nutshell?
Yep.
Does it increase the safety of the portables by having the better foundation?
Long-term, yes. Short-term, no.
It's just the long term.
Barring a storm, yeah. Long-term, yes.
Good. Andre, you being quiet, any questions? You contemplate nicely.
My vocational skill is not what my esteemed colleagues is. So I'm listening and learning right now. Dates and places, good. You know, actual things in the real world, putting them together, much learning to do.
Continue, I guess.
All right. So, option three, base bid, alternate one and alternate three, or alternate two, sorry. So the only addition here is the alternate two, two extra classrooms at Hyannis West only, $315,000. We'll have a 16% contingency with the additional appropriated funds, and the net here would be 3.5 million.
So I did that walkthrough with High West. I cannot imagine taking on a project of this magnitude and omitting those additional two classrooms. I think if we were to only provide the four classrooms in the base, we're going to be coming back to address this space concern in a few more years. I'm not sure if anybody else walked through that building.
Yeah, I think we all have.
Yeah.
Can I ask you a question? So Peter brought up a good point about how it's, obviously, it's only 315 for two more, right? So it's site work and all of that. So what happens in three years, or four years, or 10 years, it doesn't matter the years, we all of a sudden are in the same spot we're in right now, where like, okay, we need two more classes at High West? Is it, is there more, are we going to have to then go back and in order to do those two classrooms, have to do more site work to add those two classrooms? Or, you know what I'm saying? So like, the 315 now, I get it, and I'm not, I'm not against it, or I'm just asking in my brain. So is that 315 now or never? Because, or not never, but it's going to be more expensive because we have to do more site work, and we have to do more stuff? Or is it inflation is what's going to make it go up, not more site work and more stuff like that?
No, that's, that's a good question. Inflation, obviously, it's going to go up. However, mobilization is huge, once a vendor's on site. The site work, where we're coordinating them and planning to put it, to put the structures, there is room for growth, but we could coordinate so that there's even more room if we think that will become an issue. So I think you're going to have mobilization costs, you're going to have to tie into the existing.
Right, so that's what I'm saying. So there is going to be, there is going to be site work costs that are going to be 10 years down the road, or, I won't go 10 because inflation is crazy, but, but we'll say three years down the road, because hopefully inflation won't be quite as much. So we're going to incur more costs doing it three years later than we are right now if we do add the extra two classrooms.
Correct.
Okay, that's, that's what I'm trying to get at. So there are going to be, if we do it now, while they're there and doing it, it's going to be less than if they have to come back in three years and add the two classrooms?
Absolutely.
Okay.
All right, maybe one more dumb question. So.
There is no such thing as dumb questions.
All right. Back to the concrete footing. So we have four at High West, four at BCIS, and that costs $125,000. It still costs $125,000 if we add two more classrooms?
Yes, that.
So those are freebies? They just throw in the concrete on the, on those two, maybe?
Peter, do you remember your bathroom that was $500,000 a couple of weeks ago?
Yes, I remember that, yeah.
Your, your eyes are getting bigger here because you're now getting freebies for that bathroom.
So I, I think those costs, and one, I would assume those costs are built into alternate two, because they understand the need for the foundation under alternate two.
So is there anything, that's, that's pretty much it, right? That's, that's it in the?
Yep, so we have a.
There's our thing right there, our chart.
Yep, our summary page.
Yeah, go ahead.
Pretty self-explanatory. So you have your three options laid out. Accept base bid, $3,060,000. Base bid and alternate one, 3.185, and base bid and two alternates is 3.5.
Go ahead, Kathy.
Who provided these bids? Which company is this?
We currently, this is Aries Building Systems LLC.
Aries?
Yep, A-R-I-E-S.
Okay. Do you have any other questions, Kathy? No? Andre? Well, let me ask you, do you have any questions, or do you want to just kind of go around and see what we're thinking?
No, no specific, no more questions.
Okay, so why don't we go through and?
All right, it seems like option three is the best bet for your money, I think.
Yeah, okay. Andre, what are you thinking?
You know, for an additional, you know, if it's, if it's a $3 million project, the installation's going to be the same across the board. You're looking at, you know, essentially from the first bid to the second, you know, $450,000 overall, but, you know, you get, you know, from an aesthetic standpoint, that didn't seem right to me when you're talking about what the buildings are sitting on, just putting them on, on concrete, you know, blocks.
Blocks, yeah.
You know, then my next question, if I did have a question, are you going to cover that with something, you know, versus, it didn't seem to be aesthetically pleasing at all. And so the additional cost for, you know, a firm concrete foundation didn't seem to me to be prohibitive.
Can I, can I pull up, I have one more slide.
Oh, yeah, sure. I'm sorry. I didn't mean to cut you off.
I brought some, some plans. It shows the location at the schools, the proposed location, along with some elevation, so you'll see what you're getting. It gives you an elevation view, so the outside image. Thank you. So this is Hyannis West. So you can see the main school, the laser pointer on this doesn't show up on the screen, sorry. The orange square bottom, or kind of middle left, is the portables. That's currently the back section of the school where the playground is, if everyone's familiar. So we'll go over, this is BCIS, their large playground up on the, if you're looking at the school from Pierce's Way to your right, which is the west side of the school. They're going to go in that parking lot, half in the parking lot, half on the grass there. So this is your overview of the four, what it will look like. This is your floor plan. So you've got your bathrooms off to the right, and you have your four classrooms. All the plumbing is in that one modular, and the four other modulators are classrooms. That's just a ceiling view, sorry. This is what it will look like from the exterior. So there will be a skirt around the whole exterior, so you will not see the foundation. You'll just see T-111 all the way down to the ground.
Can you just go back to the last one?
This one?
I'm sorry, one back. So the, so where would the next, if we do six at High West, would they just bump out further down the hallway?
Correct.
Okay, so you're going to come in here, the bathrooms, and you're going to have six classrooms instead of, with a hallway down the middle?
Each pair of classrooms is two modulators, squished together. So it would just be two more, two more.
Right.
And you could, you could go on forever.
Right, as long as you have room.
Eventually, you'd need more bathrooms.
So what do we think? So Kathy, what do you?
I, I think we should go with the option number three.
Yeah, I agree. I just think, like Peter said, it's just for another 400, and it's a lot of money. But for $460,000, you're getting, like Andre said, a more permanent foundation, and you're adding two more classrooms. I just, to me, that's kind of makes sense. If nobody has anything, let's make a motion.
Move to accept the June 1, 2023 proposal for Aries Building Systems LLC for the purchase of six classroom units at Hyannis West Elementary School and four classroom units at Barnstable Community Innovation School and seek supplemental appropriation from the district share of free cash school savings account in the amount of, would it be for the total, Chris? 3.5 million net, any ESER funds that may be available.
I'll second.
Having a motion seconded, this is a voice vote, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed nay. Eyes have it unanimously. Excellent, thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Moving on to 6.3, bid, award, and acceptance for Barnstable Public Schools' generator replacement in addition project. Mike?
Here I am.
Welcome back.
We're here to ask for the appropriation for the generator replacement projects at the five schools. So we're replacing a generator at BIS, we're replacing a generator at Hyannis West, and we're installing new generators at BWB, Centerville, and BCIS. Also, along with this project, BCIS and BWB, the transformers are in the crawl spaces. That's not standard nowadays. So we're pulling them out, and they're going outside in a box.
So they're being upgraded at the same time?
Correct. We, these were separate CIPs we brought to you back in October, but because the nature of the projects, we combined them into one in the bidding process. It, it allowed us to get a better price.
Okay. So this is already been, this is coming back after the RFPs went out, the proposals went out, and this is coming back for the, to accept the proposals that.
Correct.
Went out and came back. Okay, do we have any questions? So this, just for the public, so this fund, these funds have already been approved through the capital improvement projects, correct?
Correct.
Okay, I just want to make it so the public realizes that we're not spending new money. This is money that we've already gotten, which is finally to the point where we're ready to accept the proposal. And when do you think they'll be put in? Over the summer, or who knows? Or how long is the back order?
So generators from the date of purchase or order are 52 weeks.
Oh.
That's a year. Transformer are 75 weeks, transformers. So, yeah, so this is a project for next summer.
Wow, okay.
Hopefully lead times improve, but I, there's no sign of that right now.
Okay. Having no questions, got to get a motion.
Move to accept the bid of and award the contract to Phillips Electric Incorporated in an amount of $843,000 for the fiscal year '23 Barnstable Public Schools' generator replacement and addition project as recommended by the chief procurement officer.
I'll second.
Having a motion seconded, this is a voice vote, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Eyes have it unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mike. Have a good night. 6.4, approve 2.0 FTE crossroads paraprofessionals at High West for FY '24. Sarah?
Thank you. So this request is coming to you to support two crossroads paraprofessionals at Hyannis West. This is, I think, an integral part of improvement to that program. The paraprofessionals provide support to students as they generalize skills when they are included in the gen ed classrooms, and would look for your support. At this point, you know, we're evaluating paras across the district, expect students to move in, students to move out. So this is part of the flexibility that I think special ed necessitates, and are looking for your support.
Have any questions?
Going to ask about the funding?
So, we'll use, we'll look across salary lines across the entire district with respect to special education, and if we need to make adjustments, we will, going through the process that we go through for transfers.
Thank you.
Having no other questions, got to get a motion.
Move to approve two full-time equivalent crossroads paraprofessionals at Hyannis West for fiscal year '24 as presented.
Having a motion seconded, this is a voice vote, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Eyes have it unanimously.
Thank you.
Moving on to 6.5, approve non-affiliated salary increases for FY '24. Do you want to, it has my name, but.
So this is a motion for the committee to approve salary increases for those non-affiliated personnel in the amount of 3%.
And this is for non-affiliated, so this is for, this was actually, we had this, this was dealt with actually last month in executive session. We had a discussion, and this is just making it public record. So I'll take a motion.
Move to approve non-affiliated salary increases for fiscal year '24 in the amount of 3% as presented in tonight's materials.
I'll second.
Having a motion seconded, is voice vote, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed nay. Eyes have it unanimously. 6.6, approve FY '23 grants, gifts, and donations.
Good evening, thank you. Before you, are a few grants for your acceptance, one of which actually is part of Mike's project. Got $50,000 off of that, that energy management performance grant there for the emergency at BIS. So that's a great thing.
Are there any questions? No?
Move to approve grants, gifts, and donations as outlined in the documents presented tonight.
I'll second.
Having a motion seconded, voice vote, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Eyes have it unanimously. 6.7, approve budget transfers. Chris?
Yep, we've got a budget transfer in the amount of $22,000 for the assistant superintendent to cover tuition or course reimbursements for professional staff.
Seeing no questions, can I get a motion?
Move to authorize deputy director of finance to transfer funds between cost centers as presented in tonight's materials.
I'll second.
Having a motion seconded, is voice vote, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Eyes have it unanimously. 6.8, approve accounts payable warrant FY '23. 6.8, approve accounts payable warrant FY23 warrant number 49. Can I get a motion?
Move to approve accounts warrant payable number 49 in the amount of $322,637.07. I'll second.
Having a motion seconded, this is a voice vote, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose, nay. Eyes have it, three to one. Thank you, Chris. 7.1, executive session, to approve, to approve the school committee executive session minutes for May 3, 2023 to hear a Barnstable Teachers Association grievance to discuss strategy regarding collective bargaining with the Barnstable Administrators Organization per Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, subsection 21A3, to discuss salary adjustments for non-affiliated personnel, a strategy session in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel and/or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, Michael Lambros, Sarah O'Hearn and Jane Moynihan, and to discuss strategies with respect to litigation. Can I get a second?
Second.
Having a motion seconded, this is a roll call vote, Peter?
Yes.
Andre?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Chair is a yes, passes unanimously. So I just, we will be, this is to come back out into open session. So we will be back, thank you.
I'd like to resume the Council School Committee meeting after our executive session. I'd like to go to 8.1, approve the contract for the director of faci-- oh, did you? I'll say, approve the contract for the director of facilities. Can I get a motion?
Move to approve a three-year employment contract for the director of facilities, Mike Lambros, to reflect a base salary of $127,500 for the 2023-2024 school year and other such terms and conditions as presented to the school committee.
A second.
Having a motion seconded. This is a roll call vote. Peter?
Yes.
Andre?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Chair's a yes passes unanimously. Moving on to 8.2, approve superintendent's salary for FY '24.
Move to approve the fiscal year 2024 annual salary for the superintendent in the amount of $213,870.70 for fiscal year '24.
I second.
Having a motion seconded. So I just like to give a little bit of discussion about this. And I'm gonna kinda, I apologize now, but I was kinda, Sarah and I kinda had a conversation and she wanted a 1.45 raise. So we gave the 1.45 raise, but then we gave a 1% merit because we think that you're doing a phenomenal job and we want to make it, instead of putting it together, we kinda wanted to make sure that there was that merit raise of 1%. So, sorry to kinda talk about what you wanted, but you know what, I also wanted to just let people know that the school committee is 100% behind you and we're showing it by a 1% merit raise. So that's what we came up with the number. Moving on to 8.3.
Oh, we didn't vote.
Yes, we did. And then we did.
Oh, we did vote. No, do--
Oh, I'm sorry. So I made this. So, that's right. So, roll call vote. Peter?
Yes.
Andre?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Chair's a yes passes unanimously. Moving on to 8.3, approve school attorney's salary for FY '24.
Move to approve the fiscal year '24 annual salary for the school attorney of $151,883.10 for fiscal year '24.
I'll second.
Having a motion seconded, roll call vote. Peter?
Yes.
Andre?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Chair's a yes passes unanimously. Can I get a motion adjourned?
Move to adjourn.
Second?
I second.
Roll call. Peter?
Yes.
Andre?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Chair's a yes passes unanimously. Have a good night. Unanimously, have a good night.